Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Hoogler. Councilor Minio.
Here.
Councilman Sackes.
Here.
Councilwoman Mezer.
Here.
Council President Cook.
Here. Please rise for the solicitor flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for whose stance one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I just read the... And now said that an adequate notice has been... Wait, let me slow it down. You got me all lost now. Adequate notice of this meeting has been sent to all council members by police messenger on December 6th, 2002, and to all legal newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.O., 1975. Councilman Cook.
Yeah, please, what I want to say, Omar Rodriguez is sitting here, but Omar Rodriguez is not a councilperson until January 1st. I don't think Omar should make any statements whatsoever during the public... Ah, not public meetings, but during the meeting because he is not a councilperson until January 1st. And I just want Omar to, if you can, please try to... I know it's my duty to shut up, but I'd like you to refrain from any comments because you're not a councilperson until January 1st or July 1st.
January 1st.
Then you can sit with this gentleman, sit. All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion to have the meeting to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jim Vissel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, township administration, members of the community here. My name is James Vissel, I'm the president of James D. Vissel Incorporated. I'm here on behalf of my client, T-Mobile Omni Point Communications, in respect to the municipal bid that was released November 25th with return date on December 4th regarding the property on Route 46 westbound adjacent to... It's right at the police pistol range. I understand that there may be some question or concern with the request for proposal and perhaps with compensation involved. I'm here to answer any questions that the council may have, and I'm certainly willing to provide any information with regard to the process, with regard to the process and how we came upon the particular property and how we began.
Jim, who would on the tower when it's installed?
In the request for proposal, it does state that once the tower is fully constructed, the tower then becomes the property of the township of Saddle Brook.
Good question.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this was after passing bids?
It was, sir.
And your bid was how much for the township?
It exceeded the minimum bid in the request for proposal.
Okay, but what were your bids? Can we make it public?
Yes, it was.
Should be public in the resolution. So still can you make it public?
Yes, it was $1,555 per lot.
Okay, now, in my personal opinion, I think that we should be able to see if we can do better than that.
And may I ask on what basis you're requesting that or...
Councilman, there's something I want to cut you off. Certainly, there is the potential that the formal action taken by this council received may result in litigation. I'm not going to turn this into a deposition, nor am I going to give any member of the public the opportunity to impose you with regard to the why's and wherefores of your formal action. That formal action is embodied in the resolution. That resolution states as follows. "The council has reviewed the bid specifications and the bid submitted in response thereto by the sole bidder and has determined that the proposal of Omni Point Communications should be rejected as the minimum unit pricing contained in the bid specifications did not adequately provide for market value consideration for the leasehold interest in question. And in addition, the township attorney has further recommended the proposal of Omni Point Communications be rejected as the bid proposal so submitted contained material and hence nonwavable deviations from the specifications as follows. A) The bid security was not presented by way of a certified or cashier's check and B) an unconclusion affidavit executed by the contractors was executed by the contractor's agent but not the contractor itself. This resolution purports to speak for this board with regard to the legal why's and wherefores underlying the rejection of the bid. It should speak for itself, and I will not permit it to be proposed at this time." I'm sorry, Phil.
That's right. I just say, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not here to propose you. I was just here to try and, I guess, solicit some information on if we began the process on April 17th of last year and we worked in good faith with the township, went through the whole process for nine months, why at this late date it's now becoming an issue.
Mr. Cook, if I may respond to that?
Yes, you may.
These bid specifications were put together through the office of the township council in discussion with the township clerk, township administrator. They were not discussed in detail by this board, they were issued. When the bids came in, the entire matter was reviewed, it was the position of the council that the minimum compensation sought there was inadequate. In the solicitation for proposals duly advertised in accordance with the local public contracts law, a reservation of this council's right appeared pursuant to which it reserved the right to reject bids for any and all bona fide reasons. We believe that this resolution expresses those bona fide reasons.
Well, I would just like to make a final statement then, that on behalf of T-Mobile Omni Point, we remain committed to providing services to the community here and to the residents and the business community. We are looking forward to continued cooperation with the township. We will certainly review any further proposal or request for proposal that the township may consider, but we will be moving forward in finding alternate locations for my clients' network to make sure that they're competitive within the market. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vissel. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Mike Daniel, 86, Delano Avenue. Just asking if there's a quick update on the O-Bow proceeding. I see in the correspondence, you had listed for tonight's meeting, there was correspondence between the council and Mr. O-Bow dated December 17th. Did you update it? Is that a settlement?
No, there was nothing more to be settled. What I was told by Mr. O-Bow was that he was continuing to go with the last settlement that he had proposed to us.
Which was the one-page document?
Yes, and the four... I think it was about 400 apartments with 100 set aside on coupon.
I think that's the one where he suggested recreation fields on property and even homes.
That's right.
Okay. Just one other question relative to the correspondence section of tonight's meeting. I see Scott is sending the letter of resignation dated December 2nd here.
Yes.
What does that do to our current litigation? Does that have an impact on...
No, it does not have an impact on it, no.
Okay.
Mr. Haley, if I may, if I may, it's proposition that certainly the administration has changed, and I want to keep the door open without any impediments whatsoever to the new administration to appoint the staff of professionals that it wants to appoint. So I don't want to in any way create any potential that there could be carryovers or haulovers. Certainly, this new administration has the right to appoint the professionals of its choice, and in so submitted that resignation, I want to keep that door open to that very process.
I'm happy to hear that, Scott. Just one other question. I think at last council meeting, you said we had to submit documents to the court by December 17th or something.
Well, there was, in the interim, there were a couple of delays. The planning board did meet with respect to the proposal of senior living at Saddle Brook with regard to the senior housing component of the overall amount of rural settlement. That meeting took place this past Monday. We appeared before the court on Wednesday morning, and as a result of that appearance, the court shall order, and we're working on the form of the order, it's going to be consent order, that involves the input of all of the parties, but the court has directed the applicant to include the conditions of the Saddle Brook Planning Board in its development plans. Those conditions include modifications to the plan to accommodate traffic flow, parking considerations, drainage, flow of potable water, flow of sewage. In essence, I believe that a very beneficial compromise has been reached between the parties where there are components of the plan that, while initially objectionable to the planning board, they have now capitulated with respect to certain points and vice versa. There were certain elements that were unacceptable to the developer that he has likewise capitulated to. We anticipate that this aspect of the overall, not rural aspect of the litigation will proceed without further delay.
When's our next appearance in court, Scott?
At this... And we have a settlement conference before the court on 7 January of '3. In between now and then, we don't anticipate any other substantive appearances. The court would like to hear from all the parties now that the administrations have changed with regard to any potential change in positions with regard to settlement.
Okay. But when you're talking about the senior housing, what you're talking about...
That's a good deal.
Yeah, but that doesn't include the senior housing that's under discussion over off of Victor's street.
No, it does not.
Okay.
This is what's off of Victor and Sylvan, yeah?
Oh, it does?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Oh, okay. Because I was a little mixed up on that, and I thought that was a separate issue.
It is a separate issue, however, it was joined, it was tied back together with O-Bow's suit and him, but it has nothing to do with O-Bow's situation.
Because wasn't that the big dispute that was going to be settled at the meeting on November 22nd between the planning board and the...
Well, that was a plan, but I don't know.
November 22nd, the applicant didn't appear. We did have a subsequent meeting, that subsequent meeting took place on September 1st. Applicants represented, but the applicant himself was not there. The representative was there in an observance capacity only, but then reported to the court the following Wednesday, the 11th, yesterday morning, that what should have been proposed by the planning board by way of additional conditions were acceptable and would be included in the order.
Okay. I was a little confused, and that's why I wanted to clarify that. Because I thought the issue over in that portion of the township was exclusive or, you know, separate issue.
Again, it's part of the same litigation. It's a separate component working on a separate track, really with a separate life of its own, but it's all under the heading of the same general litigation.
Okay. So at this point, there's no settlement talks going back and forth between us and the O-Bow people? Is that fair to say?
Other than what you saw in the correspondence.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, John, do you want to add to him? I'm going to say, because you've got a special meeting, what's coming up, he should be aware of the fact...
Yeah, we have a... Go ahead, Ed.
We have a special meeting, a work session pertaining to some type of a game plan that this council is going to defend at January 7th meeting when we meet with the judge in O-Bow. We've ever had a game plan of what we're doing, we're just going along with the stream goals. Corker, our professional planner, our attorneys will be here, and the council will be giving and taking and listening to what's ever happening. We have to prepare ourselves for the best and for the worst on January 7th. I don't intend to go and see that judge on January 7th and then start thinking that time. I don't know if the public is invited because this may be for litigation, I got to leave that up to somebody else.
Is that locally yet or in the...
It's going to be held right here, I assume.
Yes.
And is that open to the public?
I don't know.
Mr. Scott?
What I would recommend, since we're discussing settlement and litigation, that, you know, that's a perfect fit to be discussed in closed session, but at the same time, if you feel that there is going to be no detriment to the settlement strategy resulting from it being held in an open session, or at least portions of it in open session, then you can do so. I mean, the purpose of having it in closed session is so that your strategy is not compromised. If you feel that that's not a risk, then you can do it in an open session.
I would prefer, now, that's only me, the council, if they want. We have a situation here where Corker's going to come in and tell us exactly the facts that what I hear and what's on the record, except I don't believe anybody on this council, including myself, can go through those thousands of pages of testimony and come up on January 7th, well, he said this and that and said that. I, for one, would like to listen to Corker to refresh my mind on that day of what he said, because I didn't read his testimony, and what's his recommendations for the town, and after he finishes, then I might say, I'm sorry, folks, you may have to leave now because now we're going to get into something that maybe we have to bend some things. I don't know.
No, I understand perfectly what you're saying.
But I do believe, in my personal opinion, if we hold it to the general public, this is going to be one of the biggest things that hits Saddle Brook since I've been here.
That's the reason for my question. I think the township would really like to be in, you know, what's going on.
The worst thing was in 1969 when we had the sewers, and that was only for $7 million. Then we had something that we had to pay taxes back to people, that was only $3 million. What's happening now is going to be three times more than anyone you paid.
Well, then, I think, you know, what's before us now, and I've said this for every month that I've been before you folks on this issue, is this is a situation that's going to affect this town from now until the end.
I will be dead and buried and dead and resurrected.
So what happens now is going to not only affect my grandkids, but probably their kids if they still live. And I just can't believe some people I'm talking to, they just don't think this is a major issue. They, either they don't understand the issue itself, or they don't give a damn. I don't know which is which.
They don't give a damn. We're pressing a resolution tonight where it says clean planning or something, but you don't want sprawl. We're pressing a resolution that the state said so, now we're in court that says whatever you, it's no good, we're going to sprawl.
Well, I mean, how many articles have I brought to you from every newspaper around that's more or less? I mean, Scott has told me many times over that the court has had a step with the public opinion, and they are, and they always have to. But what I'm concerned about is, I speak on behalf of most of the people I've talked with, not all of them, of course. They, you know, some people don't even know what you're talking about half the time on this issue. But the bottom line is, is that for those that are interested, I would strongly encourage you to have an open meeting because I think if you don't do it, you know, perception, the old story, perception is reality, closed session means you're hiding something. Okay, think about that. You know, I'm just making the suggestion to you because from a voter perspective, you know, having closed meetings has a negative kind of... And if you hold closed sessions on an issue like this, I think you're giving, sending the wrong message to your populace.
John, excuse me, through the chair.
Go ahead.
Why don't we just settle it now? I have no objection to...
No. We have...
Go ahead. Joey, there may be portions of that meeting, and I'm not saying that the entire meeting be conducted outside of the presence of the public, but there, we really have to kind of roll with the punches here. There may be portions of the meeting where myself or Katner may have to give a legal opinion that should not be out there for not so much your residents to hear, but by word of mouth get back into the hands of our adversaries in this case. And we have to remember that we have adversaries in this case. I think we just have to play it by ear because that's the concern, not so much with these people here. We want these people to see the light of day of everything that you're doing, but there may be certain strategies that we are prepared to move forward with by way of proposals and council proposals, that if we're out in the street and in the hands of our adversaries could be detrimental to whatever strategy we identify and seek to implement.
Okay, so the public can be invited, but there may be portions of the meeting that we have to go into closed session.
Yeah. Believe me, that's fine. These people are the folks that we want to understand what's happening. We do have a bank of adversaries out here that we have to protect ourselves from.
Exactly.
I think the public would accept, you know, the information that you can't jeopardize your case. And if that's made known to the public, they would certainly leave the room, or you folks will leave the room, whatever. What I'm suggesting to you is don't hold them in a crowded closed session and shut the public out, that's all.
You're absolutely right, through the chair. You're absolutely right. I agree with you that we should have invited the public in and have input on the public. Within the last few weeks, I've met with some people in the area, the affected area, immediate affected area, and some of those representatives are here tonight. Since we just formulated that December 16th meeting amongst us as late as yesterday afternoon to get everybody together on their schedules to have that meeting, it's helpful that we do have your input, we have the affected areas' input into our decision-making process so that when we go January 7th, I have something or we have something together to go and say these are what, this is what the residents want from the community as a negotiating or a bargaining chip for the developer. That's what I'm looking for.
That's all I'm looking for.
And that's what we're doing out in the community, and I have absolutely no objection. I do think it should be closed.
Is that like an evening meeting that we...
It's Monday the 16th at 7:00 P.M.
Monday the 16th?
This is coming Monday.
Okay, at 7:00 P.M.?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, councilman, councilwoman. My name's Stephen Cooks, 299 Lanza Avenue. I'm new to the town. I just purchased said address on 9/11. On 9/17, my home was robbed. Saddle Brook investigated, but I guess, I don't know if this is the place to bring my rights. But said officer who investigated my home used his office... First off, not everyone has a Rosie pass. What I did in my past is done, I took care of it, but said officer, we should remain neighbors, so he had to tell my neighbors, to tell merchants in the neighborhood what I had done in my past. Now, that's not public record for anyone. You have to either be an officer, a lawyer, a judge, or something to get to these records. But yet this officer seemed fit to tell some of my neighbors, again, some of the merchants, and proceeded to publicly belittle me on Marcus Street by calling me all types of names that I wouldn't repeat, you know, and I just wanted to bring it up here because it's been bothering me. I waited all my life to buy a home in this town, and I finally got it, and to be treated like the way I was treated, I feel as though wasn't right. I mean, it has nothing to do with what's going on here, but I had to get that off my chest, you know, and I didn't know if I should have brought any of my friends and friends to the town council. That's all I really wanted to say because I don't think anybody in a position of some type of power should be giving out what I did in my past. I paid my dues for what I did. You know, I'm not that person anymore. Things do change, people do, can change. I've done that, and to be belittled and everything else... This is an officer that's investigated my home being robbed, by the way, which to me, nothing was ever done, no one's seen anything, heard anything, nothing. And then to be belittled, it's not really a good feeling, especially being a new guy in town. Thank you.
Can I make a recommendation? Through the chair, let me make a recommendation. Why don't you get Pete, get the information from this gentleman? We'll have the chief of police look into the matter and report back to us as to his findings as to what took place.
Thank you very much.
Just ask the court if a letter would be going down to the chief, and he said yes, there would be, so as councilman Minio said, give them the information.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Andrew Blinder, North 6th Street. Good evening, council. I just have a question about regarding the light over on Marcus by Walmart. Something about a light is now being erected or something, I don't know much about, I've only heard, now I see it here. Can you give me a little update on that?
The owner of the property is footing the bill to put the light up coming out of Walmart's. The plans, we have the plans here. New driveways would also be set up where it's probably being about the center of their parking lot coming out so they can make their left-hand turns. We had the cones up, as you know, in North 7th Street block, but because of our smart, some of our smart drivers to get around the cones, they decided to make their left-hand turns and U-turns, and we've had a couple near misses, and a couple bad ones too, that could have resulted in bad accidents. But I believe that sometime in January, they're trying to get it set where in January the light will be going in, around January, February.
Where's the light going to go?
On Route 46, probably midway on their property, or I would say maybe midway between the low-dive light and the 5th Street light.
Where the U-Haul sign is. You'll see a U-Haul sign just about there.
Now, they're going to bust through the concrete barrier?
Yes.
All right, so you're going to, it's going to just be another...
You can't go otherwise. Sorry? You can't go across through the concrete barrier, it'll remain.
No, they're going through.
They go through the concrete barrier.
John, through the chair.
Do you have any answer or no? They are?
Excuse me, we have plans here, shows the visor, shows where the light's going, if you want to take a look at it after the meeting.
Yeah, do you want to see that, John?
Okay.
But just go through.
Yeah, and they fast-tracked it too, so they promised us down the state that they were going to start this in January. What expedited it was the property owner is funding it, which really fast-tracked it, so...
That's always good.
It's going to be done in January, they expect it to start in January.
Okay. So the whole entire thing with the NJDOT coming down, figuring out what they're going to do with the bridge, the pedestrian, the global leaves, taking that house and stuff, that's all moved?
No, through the chair, excuse me.
Go ahead.
That's not mute, and I think sometime in January, February, they want to schedule another meeting. We haven't set a date yet, depending on the new administration taking office, but no, they're still planning the jug handles in their minds. It's still part of their program.
Although Walmart has contributed to much of the traffic, it's still, that investigation was going on only basically because they said that that was a dangerous intersection anyway. So I wanted to know if that light going up was going to be what they thought was going to rectify the problem, which is bad left-hand turns regardless. Okay, they took down the cones and everything, which is all good, and, you know, I understand for the safety of the people, sometimes you have to give a little bit, just let them make their left-hand turns. We had barricades on North 6th Street, which were stopping cars from coming down our street using as an alternative route, which they, which when it was up, the barrier worked really good because we saw people getting ready to make right-hand turns, they realized they couldn't because the signs up there said, you know, road closed, through traffic only, and they had to go the other way, which I think everyone on the block really did like, and there was no complaints from anybody that I know of, including the pleasure plus video right in the corner because it was located where the cars can get into their parking lot, and people who saw the sign kind of just didn't go down the street. Is there any problem with putting those barricades back up?
Through the chair.
They were removed at the recommendation of the police chief and superintendent DPW when we had the snowstorm last week, and for plowing purposes and because of the width of the roadway, they were removed, and as the snow melts, and we were concerned we might have ice last night, so the barricades have been removed, but we'll be working with the chief on it.
So possibly they aren't going to go back up?
The big concern was the left-hand turn, that was dangerous, and the chief has made the recommendation that the barricades not be put back there.
Putting back...
The left-hand turns on Route 46 to 5th Street, U-turns.
Right, I understand that, but the thing with the right-hand turn on North 6th Street...
We're working on that, weather permitting, we should have barricades back up.
Okay. That's it. You all have a Merry Christmas?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Burr.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there somebody else with your name in here?
I hope not. All right. Okay, well, this is awful quiet tonight. Let the things off, huh? But big cover on 590 Cory Avenue. First of all, before I start, let me wish each and every one of you a wonderful and blessed holiday in your environment.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Now, last month, the voters of Saddle Brook sent a powerful, forceful, and compelling Fifty-seven percent of registered voters went to the poll, and they split down the middle. In other words, they refused to give each, any, either political party a mandate. And when you consider that, the 43% of the voters that did not go and vote did not so because they have been completely alienated by the political system that we have in this township at this time, the message becomes crystal clear. The people of these townships said that we are sick and tired of government by dissent, by recriminations, by impiting, by jealousy, by insults, by innuendo, by absolute and outright lies. That we are sick and tired of a government by a special interest, of a special interest, by a special interest, and for a special interest. And we are sending a message to you. To me, it's actually significant that the only person that got a mandate, the only candidate that got a mandate in this election, Mr. Kubler.
That's because I'm older than everybody.
Yeah, I love that. Precisely, it's precisely the person that consistently has anticipated problems. And not only has he anticipated the problem, but he has consistently given solution to those problems. Equitable solutions to the problem without regard to a special interest. Let me give you the latest example of that. Less to be visited for a minute, the three hundred thousand dollar grant that we were talking about last week, remember? I don't know how many times Mr. Kubler insisted that that money should go directly to the Board of Education and have them do whatever they please with it. You remember all that? Consistently, he insisted that we should do that. Now, what do you do, what do we do instead? We commissioned our engineers to make a study of that ballpark, which happens to be the property of a school system. Now, what are our engineers doing? A study on property that belonged to the school system? You tell me that. That's a business of the Board of Education, Mr. Kubler. In fact, that was wasted money. That was wasted money, in fact. Not only wasted money, but may have been illegal, in fact, because you have no business meddling with the Board of Education business. Now, maybe you can explain to me why you did it the way you did it. Mr. Chairman.
We spoke with the Board of Education on Monday, I mean Tuesday, they were here for a meeting for something other than that, but we spoke with them because of the fact of our engineers doing the work and their engineers doing the work. We asked for the grant. The grant is coming to the municipality, not to the Board of Education. And right now, we have the Board of Education, we're looking into it rather, to find out if it's legal for us to transfer that open space fund to the Board of Education, and then they will carry on the work. We're not sure that we could do this since it's state money or county money.
You're not sure you can do it, but still, you wanna head and commission our engineers to go make a study of the property.
Mr. Caber. For the, can I use, Mr. Caber?
Yes.
For the past four years, we've been putting money into the schools. The fields, the recreation fields, using our engineer. It never came up as a problem before.
Well, I believe it is a problem because, I mean, they're two separate entities.
Right.
Having completely separate entities. You have a Board of Education, and that's a business. Not yours. And our engineers have no business going over there making a study of property that belongs to the school government. Mr. Caber, if you would please?
Well, that's, all depends on whether my client wants me to offer an opinion in public. I don't believe that there's any lawful impediment to spend that money and commission our engineers to conduct a study on property that is owned by the school system. I believe that the law permits that. It's not a question of legality. It's a question of appropriateness.
Okay.
And this council determined it to be in the best interest of the community and necessary for the efficient operation of the community to do so. That's not a legal question.
How would that be?
Because I'm lost. You lost me there. That's a governance question, not a legal question. And I can't answer the rationale behind the governance issues, but I can tell you whether or not the action is lawful or unlawful. In this instance, the action is lawful.
I'm pretty sure, you're totally right, I'm not. But I have my doubts about whether that thing is legal or not, alright?
But it's, believe me, I have my doubts as well.
Oh, I'm glad to hear that.
And you know what?
I'm glad to hear that.
One of the explanations was, we have been doing this for years. Hey, but I have studied the issue, and I'm satisfied that it is a lawful expenditure of monies.
Do you know that that happens all the time? Something is done, if thing don't run at the beginning, and it's done for twenty years long, because we have been doing this for twenty years, it's got to be right.
See?
But it's not so on time, is it?
No, it is not, indeed. And I can tell you, Mr. Caber, this one was looked at. And I'm satisfied that it's a lawful expenditure. It's an issue of governance, not lawful.
Well, it would be easy, actually, and I'm bringing this to all of you, to do as Mr. Kubler suggested. Just give that money to the Board of Education, and let them do with it what they please.
There was never an objection. We needed to get the plan into effect. We applied for the grant, just like four years ago, and we bonded four hundred thousand dollars for the schools. It was in the goodness of our hearts to try to help the schools so that the wrecked fields get fixed for the children. The same thing this time, three hundred thousand. And if we need to give it to the school, we mentioned it the other night, they may accept it if we can do it.
But that's what we have the Board of Education, when we have a council. See, two separate entities.
The bottom line, the bottom line for me is that in the end, the end result, the wrecked fields are better for kids. That's what it's all about, isn't it? When you're working on?
Hold it, I just gotta hand you. Mr. Kaber, you're right, but let me explain one thing.
Okay.
I appreciate what you're saying about me, but don't do that because you're gonna make my nose get red. First of all, there's nothing illegal of what we've done.
Okay.
My problem is, it's not gonna stop at three hundred. And now it becomes a taxpayer liability under municipal government, which I object to. Second of all, we have no business putting on those in the Board of Education. However, it was selected that Mr. Sedikase and Mr. Cook are the representative to the community development to apply for grants. They have the prerogative to apply for grants. They applied for Board of Education grants. I didn't approve it. I still don't approve, but I'm going for it because I don't wanna be saying I'm asking recognition. However, we have a police department that we have a half a grant for that nothing has moved in two years. Why was an additional grant put onto that to finish it? I don't know, but we don't care about that because we're worried about the kids. I am not a councilman for a kid, or for a policeman, or for a senior. I am a councilman for all. And all should be given their two cents, regardless of what it is. We've spent four hundred thousand dollars on schools, Franklin and Washington. We're going for three hundred thousand there. That's almost a, I don't wanna complicate it, say a million dollars. It's very close to a million dollars that we could have used that grant someplace else. Now, it's possible we couldn't have. Maybe there are no grants available for anything, but I don't know if we tried. I think next year, all our grants should be for municipal purposes, not for Board of Education. I have nothing more than giving the board anything, please. I'm for the board because my kids are going through there also. Except township first, the Board of Education, any of these councilmen let the board, they should run the Board of Education. I'm sorry, I agree with them. They're serving two masters and a partnership, nothing.
And if you remember correctly, it was Bernie Goldshaw. The problem was, the town didn't own any property to put the money into. We had, excuse me, can I finish? It was Bernie Goldshaw's idea. We said, we wanna fix and improve fields for the kids, but we have no property. We have Avon Park and Fifth Street Park. So he said, the schools, that's where all the kids play anyway, put the money into there. So he was the senior councilman. We agreed with him. Yeah, that is a good idea. That's what we did. We all agreed. We all voted for it.
Would you agree with me that if the Board of Education had asked for the same grant?
Excuse me?
If the Board of Education had asked for the same grant that you asked for, for the three hundred thousand dollars?
I don't know.
To improve the ballparks, I'm sure they would have done it.
I don't know what they would.
Qualify for the grant. It was a municipal grant. I don't think that a board of that could have main application for it.
Well, we don't know that because we also filed for a grant for the V F W. On behalf of the V F W, they got the grant. We also filed for the
Eighty thousand dollars, you remember?
The elevator, they got the grant, so that may not be, we could have filed it to their name, simple as that.
That's correct. That's correct.
And that's what should have been done. That's what should have been done at that time.
I amend.
But because it's not, because some people want the credit for it, it should be the credit for Board of Education.
That's because of the special interest. We have a ballpark of special interest, and I have to be and they're not the only ones, alright? Just what I talked about. The government of a special interest, by a special interest, and for a special interest. And in the process, we're just turning everything upside down. You have plenty of work to do over here, folks. You don't need to be doing the Board of Education's work also, alright? Alright, one more thing before I sit down. On these two million dollars that we're talking about here, have somebody come to me exactly what that is? On ordinance twelve sixty-five over two?
Through the chair.
Mr. Caber, that's an amendment. We initially adopted the ordinance in August two thousand. We're amending the description for professional fees, but the total ordinance amount remains the same. That's the condemnation ordinance for the twenty forty Sampson Street.
That means professional fees are going up?
Yes.
I mean, you won't be landing on this either. We're going down.
Correct.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Great boys, that's seventeen Taggart Way. From what Mr. Caber said with the three hundred thousand and the meaning of the board, I'm happy to say I coach in town for over nineteen years. And there is nothing wrong with the council and Board of Education working together because, bottom line, they're here for the community, for the kids, for each other. So for nineteen years, I volunteer my time. I still have a team in town. I still like to see the cooperation between the council and the board. We're here for one purpose, and that's the community in itself. Alright, so what you're doing, what the board's doing, I have to say thank you for what you're doing, Walter.
Thank you. Anybody else?
It's, I forgot, we can go on to that. The paving on North Sixth Street, do you have any schedule on anything like that? I know the streets, Seventh, Madison, Lanza, of all, everything around there has been paved except the North Sixth Street. The missing block, are there any dates or anything like that?
Probably, maybe next year, but we haven't even done the two thousand and two plan because we had a lot of switching around because of changing the two thousand and one plan, so we still haven't done anything for two thousand and two. We'll have to, when we take a ride around the town and see what streets need to be done, we'll also look at that street.
Okay. At the end of Seventh, I know you told Omar not to talk. Is the Seventh Omar, are you in the Seventh? Is it dead end? Give me to shake your head. The end of Seventh is a dead end. It's all grass and open field type thing. I heard at one point in time or something, they were thinking about erecting like a little walk-around park or a bench park, something like that. Has anyone ever heard anything of that, or is this just fabrication?
No, we wanted to do that, but some of the residents in the area didn't want it. But I wanna go back and discuss it with everybody else in that area to see if they would like to have it done.
They didn't wanna park?
Excuse me?
They didn't wanna park?
A couple of people didn't wanna park, yes.
They're gonna throw that garbage there, that's why.
They were afraid because the kids that go there at night, that if we put the little park in there, that would draw more kids. More kids from the area, sorry.
That's on TV now.
Just like that, I don't.
Well, we all know that who does know about the areas, that if that park did happen, it would probably be the size of his room. I don't know if there are people in the area, I'm not concerned about it, but. Another question, we'll go back to the Omni Point guy, 'cause I just have a, I have a question about that. How big is this tower he's talking about erecting?
I
How long?
Hundred twenty, been up to twenty feet.
Hundred twenty feet. You want to go on top of the pistol range?
Yeah, just about, yeah. Right alongside the pistol range, yeah.
Alright, and just because, just, you know, forgive my ignorance just 'cause I don't know. If a guy's gonna come into town and put a tower somewhere where just a bunch of land is just doing nothing and pay us, why do we have to go through all that? Is there, I don't understand the legality behind it. Just, to me, it seems like a free way to get money.
It's the intention to utilize this as an opportunity to derive revenue. The problem here was, the council did not deem the revenue sufficient.
No, we're not using it, we're not using it though.
But you know, we'll rebid it, and a month from now, I feel very confident that you'll get more money. And you know, when he speaks here, he basically leaves us with the threat that I'm going to continue on my client's behalf to search out other properties. Well, there are a number of other companies, telecommunications companies, that will benefit this opportunity. Because not only does Omni Point need airspace, A T and T needs airspace desperately, Verizon needs airspace, not as desperately as A T and T. I represent other towns, and I see this issue in other places. The way these systems work and the way they have been configured, they really need transmission stations virtually every five or six months in order for this network to properly operate. Omni Point is by no means the only operator in town. And perhaps if a little more notice is given, maybe you'll have more bidders. This time, we only had one bidder. What is that type of?
We got one bidder wanting to spend twelve hundred, where we might get more from others, but do we put an advertisement out that says, you know, I think town is out of looking to rent out land for?
Yeah, Apollo knows, yes.
Yes, we do, okay.
They published it, yeah.
Okay, and the person that came up to us was Omni Point, and offered us that, and?
Yes, he's an agent for Omni Point. He's a broker for Omni Point.
From what you have experienced in the past and what you've dealt with, Scott, what do you see? Like, you know, come back at five thousand, two hundred?
Well, no, it's a product of how much money are they going to expend to actually erect the facility versus the revenue they're going to bring in. It's also a product of the type of facility they wanna erect. Generally speaking, if they're gonna put one of those little six-foot sled units on top of this familiar, I've dealt with that one a number of times, you're actually gonna end up getting more revenue because they have to lay out less money to make their product work. In a situation like this, where they're erecting a hundred twenty-foot tower, they may be willing to expend less on rent because of the expenditure that they're going to put into the actual hardware. So, you know, I can't tell you precisely how they're crunching their numbers. But I can tell you this, fifteen hundred a month is real money.
Fifteen hundred, I'm gonna put it in my backyard.
I'll give you a score.
I don't think I can get a group like you going for it. And one other thing, who do I discuss with, when I find out about the parking zones and stuff? I know where I live is designated as, some part of it is a commercial zone. And I think my side across the street, I don't know if I'm a commercial zone or if I'm a residential zone. How do I find this out and?
We gotta zone it, Matt. We gotta zone it, Matt, I'm sure.
John Sesther. Yeah. John Sesther could tell you down at the
What's your address?
One ninety-six.
Sixth Street?
Yeah. See, I have across the street from me, I have Topo, I have Pleasure Plus, and I have A G Acupuncturist. Now, that's all commercial, and I understand it's commercial. But on our side, is it zoned as residential, or is it still zoned commercial?
I think it's residential. I don't wanna say for sure because the empty lot in back, the garden apartment that's there, that's residential property, that whole area. And I believe all of Madison Avenue is residential area. I think Topo is the, it ends right there, but I'm not sure because you got He-Man on Route forty-six, and there's something about two hundred feet in from forty-six is commercial. So I believe that first house was trying to settle that, that used to be the store in front, so that's probably commercial.
I assume that's not controlled.
Yeah, well, that's going back nineteen sixty-eight.
Wouldn't the Pleasure Plus be a Route forty-six address that would make it commercial?
I believe that's in the appropriate zone, yeah. That used to be a bar place. The origin started back nineteen forty-something where the dubbing. We'd do many bars and then bring it to the fabric. And that's what that upstairs.
That's what it was?
Is it against the law for people to park cars that are in residential? And is it illegal to park a car for someone who's going to a commercial business in a residential neighborhood? That's where I want to know. Okay. So the block just, it can't get back with cars up and down the street, really nothing we can do, as long as you're legally parked?
No, but if any of the businesses, like the used car business or the detail shop, if they're overrun with their business and block on the street, I think that could be stopped.
They can't store their vehicles. They can't store their vehicles there.
It's registered, it's legal.
Right.
Yeah, that's right, if it's registered, it's legal.
Truck, Truckee Motors parks there, but I, that's, that's not really a bother for me, because anytime, anytime you can park a high-end car in front of my house, looks, looks fine to me. And that's all he has, is high-end cars. I was, I'm more concerned about the people that just, you know, are constantly parking in front of our house, or putting their tail under their taillights in our driveway, or going up on our curbs, or making U-turns in our driveways, you know, just using North Sixth Street as, you know, just, uh, a, a place where they can, uh, just park their cars and walk around the corner, because nobody wants to park in front of the store. I was just wondering if there was anything that could be done, any signs that say, you know, this for, you know, residential parking only, you know, but if you're saying no, then that's really it. Okay, so that's it?
Thank you.
I still wish it all Merry Christmas and everything.
Thank you.
Again, Stephen puts two ninety-nine Lanza Avenue. Uh, I just wanted to ask, is there a height and weight restriction on trucks for Lanza Avenue at tractor trailers?
I think all, all residential area, the rest is for delivery, should be excluded. If a tractor trailer goes down to deliver, that's illegal, because it's just going on there to take a shortcut through Route forty-six and get market street, I think that would be illegal, but, but please, I, it's hard to say, uh, what you're expressing.
Because the reason I ask is, I don't see them making any deliveries, it's pretty much like on a regular basis, they come ripping down Lanza, and they whiffle around and go out on the Andy's Block, which is Sixth Street to get to forty-six.
That, that's pretty stupid, because it's hard, the fact, I'm not a good driver, and for me to order a tractor trailer to make a ninety-degree, ninety-degree, would you, be you an excellent driver, or?
Yeah, well, to me, it would be pretty stupid, too, because the reason I ask is because a lot of the wires from the, from the homes are hung very low, and one of the trucks actually caught mine, and the gentleman across the street from me ripped out the cable wire, the phone wire, and when we called to have it fixed, they said it wasn't their concern, which I don't know, but I wanted to know if there's any way that can be enforced for when these trucks go down Lanza Avenue. I also have two kids, you know, not that they play in the street, but suppose a ball goes out, because a lot of these guys don't even slow down, I have, I set out there, I have one of the little radar things, the people come down that block, up within thirty-seven, thirty-nine miles an hour, you know, so I just wanted to know if anything could be done with that.
Did you, uh, did you get the, did you see the truck when it pulled anything down? Because we had an incident like that on, uh, I think it was, uh, H's Drive or Lanza, a trailer truck just went down to make a shortcut there, and it did a lot of damage to the houses, but they were able to get the guy. He had to back out of the street, he had to go about four blocks backing out.
I seen him, I seen him, one of the EMTs, what's the lady's name? Lynn Kobiyashi, she's an EMT, she seen, because he, not only did my whole house shake, it felt like an earthquake, but he took my wires, the neighbor's wires, and parted a tree in front of the chief's house, just ripped it right down, and didn't even slow down, just kept right on going. So when I got out there, I just barely caught the, I caught the three numbers in the plate as he was turning, and I'm, you know, I'm a little overweight, so I wasn't going to run to the corner to get the rest of the license plate, but, but, you know, I just wanted to know if there's anything that could be done with that.
Yeah, if you had the full license plate number, something could have been done.
Okay. Thanks, Bob.
You won.
John, that just was a show, you don't fight two ninety-nine Lanza Avenue.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Second, all the favor?
John?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
Before we go on with the agenda, I'd like to make a comment, or a statement, please. I'd like to, uh, offer condolences to Mayor Chamberlain and her family, the loss of her husband Bruce, who passed away on November twenty-fifth. Uh, Bruce was not only a great friend to many of us, but he was a dedicated volunteer. He was always ready and willing and there for whatever community project we had in town, and, uh, he will be deeply missed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I, I'd just like to address also, uh, some comments that were made here tonight by Mr. Hanley and Mr. Cabrera, and some concerns I guess some of the citizens may have in the community. As I take the oath of office January one, I will have an outline, and I will address the people of Saddle Brook, with my vision, with Saddle Brook. But as far as the new government coming into operation January one, I respectfully accept the resignation of Mr. Scott Sprovera. Uh, it's, it's been a pleasure working with him, we've had some highs and lows, and, you know, those things happen during the course of litigations. There will be a, a smooth transition, uh, the old cases that have been heard by Mr. Sprovera will continue to their completion. Uh, there will be a new attorney coming into the township, as well as engineers. I feel that the township, uh, wanted a change in the community, and I feel that the engineers that we bring in are going to bring new light, new blood into the veins of Saddle Brook. We will fight the fight when we need to, uh, and residents will feel that we should pursue those avenues. Uh, and my administration is an open-door administration, uh, certainly is going to extend a hand to both Democrat and Republican, it shows no, no face or party line. Uh, my appointments are from both parties, uh, that I plan on making in this community, because I want to do what's best interest of the community, get the job done. Whether it's a mandate, or considered a mandate or not, the fact of the matter is that there is change, there is a new administration, and there will be change. But the change will be for the good. We need your input, I offer you to come to every, every council meeting and get up at that podium and tell us what you want done in this community so that we can do it, and I plan on doing it. There's a lot of work to be done, I ask that you give myself and my administration, and give me a couple of days to get things in order so that we can move on and move forward, uh, in Saddle Brook, and we plan on doing that.